October the eighth, meeting and planning commission to order and there's agendas on the podium there if anybody wants to follow along, we'll take all eight items in order. Item number one will be a roll call.
Anita Pickett?
Present.
Jason DeBree is absent. Anderson Neal?
Present.
Dr. Hickerson?
Here.
Chris Owens?
Here.
Cory Mobbs?
Here.
And Chairman Thomas?
I am present. Item number two, adoption of the summarized minutes of the September tenth meeting. Anybody had an opportunity to look those over? Are there any changes, additions, edits? Anyone?
Adopt as.
All right, Chair took a motion for adoption in a second. This will be a voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number three would be a rezoning request by Mark Stevens, Stevens Affordable Properties LLC, number two Palm Drive, Texarkana, Texas, to rezone the property located at fifteen twenty Betty from R three low density residential to R four medium density residential for the purpose of operating a boarding house. Property is legally described as all of lot one and two, block seven of Scoggins Southside, Texarkana, Arkansas, Miller County, containing point three two one acres more or less located in Ward one. Ms. Jamie?
So this is to give you a better idea of where it is. This is the Miller County jail over here, right here. This is New Haven Golf Course. So it's in that area between East Street and New Haven, up there. The property is currently zoned R three, everything around it is zoned R three. There are utilities, there is a house that amounts, there are utilities in the water room that is on the property and the ceiling room, west side of the property. This is the house. And we have received, being Director Roberts, he was contacted by a number of citizens over there, and you have that list in your packet of people who objected to this. Director Roberts is here, and the property owner is not here, but his representative is here, his wall. Oh, he is here, I'm sorry, he did show up. So they are here. From what I understand, unless it's changed, they're talking ten people, ten residents.
Okay. So boarding house, this is because we have no other designation for that?
That is all definition of more than four people, four people is considered family, more than four people is no longer considered family.
Okay.
And it's charged.
I noticed there was no staff recommendation, is that still true?
Yes, given the amount of opposition.
Okay. We're gonna hash it out, okay? I got you. All right. Any questions for Ms. Jamie? Anyone?
We have some questions.
All right, I'd like to hear from, I'd like to hear from the property owner, anyone to speak in favor of this project?
Mary Ellen.
Good. State your name for the record, please.
Mark Stevens. So I already have a sober living, it's kind of a sober living house, it has five people in it in Texas.
Okay.
And on this property. And I've talked to Slack, and they're really needing to have a place for people to transition. And I already have experience in this. We have had no problems in this community, in fact, our neighbors love us because they need anything for their help. And we're not going to lie, there's just many people in there, and only people in there are people who are not on their here, but it's heavily getting moved, and back under feet. And we already did this.
Where's your other location, you said?
Elizabeth Street in Texas, thirty seventeen Elizabeth Street.
Okay.
And it's already been approved by the state. I don't care. They have, they've been doing this for many years, both of us, the husband and wife, we've done this. I've been doing it for about two years. I used to have a ROH.
Okay.
That's a one in Texas, that's helped people get back on their feet and then.
All right, would you state your name for the record and then just kinda tell us your program?
William Walter, I'm a former director of Restoration of Hope, twelve seventeen Maple Street in Texarkana, Texas. Previous to that, I was the director of Adult and Teen Challenge of Texas.
Okay.
I've worked with inner recovery and programs since two thousand and twelve. I've been director of a number of programs, admissions coordinator of Seven More. And my goal is just to help men get reestablished in life after addiction or some kind of life controlling issue that they've been through, maybe coming out of jail or just being estranged from their family or whatever the case may be. We're just providing a safe haven for them to get reestablished in life and get grounded. I work with Community Health Corps and Genesis Prime Care, and they're my primary providers here in the community to help people get any kind of needs they need in that area, medical or be evaluated in different areas. And so we just feel like we're providing a needed service to the community on both sides.
Okay. Good.
So ten people?
Yeah.
How do you sleep and bathe ten people in a twenty-three hundred square foot house? Like how does the situation?
Twenty-three hundred.
Oh, okay. It's listed?
It's seven bedrooms, it's huge.
Okay.
If someone added on to it at some point, I don't know why it says twenty-three hundred, it's more like three thousand. And they're seven bedrooms, there's two living areas, it's a huge house. And it's kinda even, I wouldn't say dead ends on, but it's kinda back there where, and it's right beside the church too. Is that church open?
I don't see it.
Yeah, there's a church right behind it. Any other questions from anyone to the applicants?
Has there been any communication with the neighbors about what you're doing? Uh, none?
But it's Christian, we're gonna make sure somebody's there all the time.
Sure.
And it would be all men?
Yeah.
Would sex offenders be allowed in the home?
No sex offender, no murder.
What is the parking? The parking, the parking, are there adequate spaces?
They're probably gonna have, they're probably, these are people that are really down to like they're not gonna have.
Do they have a vehicle to transport the into the front lawn and provision for all the way that they may need?
Okay, so how many people will, how many people will be working there with you?
I'll have a house manager, and then I'm director, so I go, as it stands, I now teach a class at two o'clock on Sunday, every Sunday, that's the one we have established now. And go in and check on the home at least a couple times a week or as needed.
That way house manager.
Yeah, who's being staffed with SCAT other?
So there'll be an in-resident manager?
Twenty-four hours?
Yes.
All right.
They'll go to work during the day, but everybody's required to work, you're not gonna sit around, I've got multiple businesses in there. So if they don't have a job already, I'll put them to work somewhere, because they got a, they're charged to live there, obviously.
Right, right.
So they'll be working during the day, but when they get home, there'll be someone there, a manager there a couple times.
I see.
Will they be housed for a certain length of time or?
It's just not everybody, they choose to stay there, and then there will be actual opportunities, he has several homes and stuff they will be able to like purchase, perhaps if that's something they wanna do, or maybe just get a different place.
My goal in this is to, I had a brother in prison, I don't know if he did the crime, but he did it, and he did his time, but five years, he had a little hard time when he got out, he didn't have a car.
Yeah.
He didn't have a house. And he basically ended up living with his family, so this is what my goal was, to give them a place to go. They don't have to come up with costs, they don't have to come up with anything. They come in, they don't have a job, I'll get one, at some point they start paying us rent for the place, obviously, I don't know if it's also so.
Okay.
But I plan on helping them, I'm really good at helping build their credit and stuff like that, we did that at Resto, at Restoration of Hope, Jamie has a really good program, we have to show them some power, we build their credit. You have to go to a program, at least possibly one program is on Sunday when he does his program, and one is either church, or it's one of the meetings, that's how AA or Celebrator Co. So they're required to have two meetings a week, that's Christ Day.
Yeah.
How will they get to these meetings?
We're on that call.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions from anyone?
Could you each state your name and your address for the record?
I'm Mark Stevens, two o'clock, five, Texas.
William Walter.
One, two, three, we are ten seventy-nine, Dallas.
Okay, and your name?
I'm Paul Walter.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I want to, and Roger, be correct, if I'm wrong, because we are previous to the boarding house, in our ordinance, they are required to have one parking space, park yesterday. They would have to have off-street parking for seven cars, without setting history.
Is there room for seven cars?
No.
Be parked on the street?
That's in our ordinance, that's right, Roger.
There is.
Please, go ahead.
I can provide more parking if I need to, I've got tractors, I've got everything, that side yard, there's a, there's a driveway there with a two car, carport, right there.
Yes.
And on this side, we could easily put another place to park on this side of the street.
Well, you would have to be, the street's not big enough to have off-street, on-street parking, you couldn't do that, it congests the traffic in that neighborhood too much.
You can park more cars than that.
So you'd have to have enough parking spaces on the property or behind the fence line to justify, to meet that requirement if we did the boarding house.
Not a problem. There's a huge backyard too, behind you too, with a fencing, so I could put a gate right there.
Right, right. Any other questions from anyone? All right, thank you for your comments, we appreciate the information. Does anyone here like to speak in opposition to this? Step forward. Mr. Terry, that's your ward, are you the spokesman, are you gonna, we're gonna have other people speak as well?
I'm gonna keep it real short.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Terry Roberts, and I live at twenty-one zero one Seven, approximately two blocks from fifteen twenty Betty Street where this property is located. I also serve on the Board of Representatives and represent this. This is not about, it's not an issue about what's going to be in there as far as sober living or anything else. We don't allow boarding houses, and we don't want a boarding house there. I mean, seventeen citizens have already contacted me in opposition to it. I have spoken to the pastor that's right beside, he does not. I mean, I have talked to these people, if you look at the people over here, anywhere from two years to almost seventy years, these people have invested their time, their money in their community. And a boarding house should not be in older established neighborhoods. I mean, we don't have adequate parking, that's totally one thing, the streets are very narrow because this is an older neighborhood. And with that being said, we have water pressure issues now, I've been working with SWEPCO, we have outages on a regular basis. We can't, a boarding house adding that many people to it is going to put the infrastructure that we are trying to improve even in more dire straits until we begin again. And for city ordinance, we do not allow boarding houses. And I'm adamantly against this, and I wish that either the board or the commission would vote no to make this a boarding house, or title it until other issues have been heard that have come before the commission.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Terry. Oh, I'm sorry, Terry, we had a question for you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself.
The list that we were given of the people in opposition, we basically talking one-hundred percent almost to the people around there?
Oh, yeah, the list that, the list that, you should have this list, these are the people that have actually contacted me, and now there's one, two, three, yeah, there's probably half a dozen here that did contact me, so you're up to about twenty-five people in that area.
All right, let me clarify an issue on your original statement, you said that there was a general, there was a consensus against a boarding house, but you opened your statement by saying that we're not so concerned with what they were gonna do there, but it was the boarding house issue.
It's not anything to do with how old it runs at all, I think that that's a, that's a concern in any community. But this is a boarding house, I mean, I don't, we just, we do not want a boarding house in our community.
If you call that a halfway house, would that change any opinions?
Absolutely not. That, this needs to be in a commercial area, not in a residential area, not in an established area that is an older area that these people have given their lives to, and then you're going to bring something in and revamp the whole thing, we're not partners under any way, shape, or fashion.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
I would like to.
Step to the podium and give us your name, please.
My name is Whitney Caganaru, I'm the property office, like, I don't know, it's twenty-one ten Level Street. As someone who has experienced a program just like they're talking about, I love what y'all are trying to do, I really do, but as far as this house is concerned, this particular house, and knowing how a program like this runs, I personally just do not see how it would work. The, like y'all have said, the parking, and these people getting back and forth, and things like that, I just, experiencing a program like that and knowing how one works like that.
Okay.
I just do not see how a house like that, in that specific neighborhood, would be able to function correctly. I'm not saying that it could never work just for this specific area in that community, but I just don't, I don't see how it would work.
Nope.
I spent three years in Adult and Teen Challenge, and that was with twenty-one people in one house, in a four-bedroom household, and that was in there for itself. And, but they also had a whole land, a whole property to itself, you know what I'm saying? It was not just in a residential neighborhood like this.
I see.
So that's really all I have to say about that. I love your idea, and I love what you're doing, I think it is amazing, and I really hope that y'all can find somewhere bigger, somewhere better. I just don't believe that that house would benefit y'all in that way. And I'm very sorry to say that because I do love what you're doing, I just, I don't see how it would work.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Caganaru? Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? State your name for the record, please, ma'am.
Naomi Shuane. I own most of the property around that house.
Okay.
And I'm hearing reports that fifteen twenty Betty Street, and over nine, I'm over ninety years old, I was raised.
Congratulations.
In that area. And it's the Gulf Highway shut in the morning. At that time, when I was a girl, that was Miss Curtis Patch.
Yeah.
Remember being little trees and things like that. As I grew up, streets were built, and utilities were put in there, and salt. But that house was built by my daddy and his brother, neither one of them were licensed electricians or plumbers, as far as that's concerned. And over the past thirty years, as each person got older and so forth, they'd come to me and say they will buy our house, and I would buy their house. So I have fifteen, well, there are eighteen houses that I bought, right there, on two streets. Fifteen of them I've completely remodeled and made into livable houses. Three of them I've had to try down, was too far gone. And every one of them, except one house, is kind of cat room from this place, are two-bedroom houses, small families, and so forth. Those streets are old, but the worst part of it is the plumbing is sixty years old. Do you think it's going to stand up? Now, I ever, so often I have to call the water company and say, my parents are the first, uh, Troy, your bed is on the phone again, they've had to blow out those lines there. It just, the electricity, the streets, and the plumbing.
Okay.
Will not support that many people.
You're suggesting the neighborhood infrastructure is not up to par?
It's not, it couldn't, it couldn't possibly be. If I have trouble with just, now, no house do I have that has over three children? You know, I've had to interview people, there's only one house I know, it's a three-bedroom house, and that's old, like, all of a sudden, a two-bedroom house. And there are older people, and I, now, that's a good idea, because I, people do need to help, if people come back, that's the only way they're gonna come back. But that neighborhood is just not gonna be able to get the sewer lines repaired, and even now, when I have people move into the house, I said, now, you can't put toilet paper in the commode, except poofy paper.
Mm-hmm.
Be sure that you keep a thing there, because, and actually, I have good friends that are plumbers and so forth, so, and they're constantly, and so it'd just be completely unwise to put more str- uh, straying. Somebody said you want to go out there and make a whole new sewer line, and that's what it's gonna take.
Yep.
If they put that house there, you're gonna have to put a new sewer line.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in opposition?
My name is Mike Miller, I live right at twenty-one King Austin Street, I cross the street from that house. And at that stop sign right there, every morning, my two grandkids catch the bus there, and I am afraid or something like that would be, yeah. I have to go to work in the morning, I have to watch them, I put up cameras, which I have, but I think that'd be a whole killer.
Yeah.
That's all.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am, state your name for the record.
Jeanne Bennett, and I live one street over, I can see this house from the corner where I live, I live Level Street, just across from Mrs. Caganaru. I'm here in opposition for multiple reasons, of which most everybody addressed, the children is one as well. A very small neighborhood, to watch the bus try to maneuver around the corners in this neighborhood, it's a three-street cul-de-sac with a dead end. So the dead end has problems with flooding, the city's constantly out there trying to make whatever needs to try to keep the water flow out of the ditches. So that's an issue that factors all the way down from Carter all the way down to Seventy-One. And that one issue on both those corners are very, very difficult turns to make in a regular car. If you're in a truck, or if someone decides to turn into those streets, you are just about in the ditch. So that is one factor with traffic that's a concern, that's always been a concern, but I still bought a home in that neighborhood because I've had family in that neighborhood for seventy-plus years.
Mm-hmm.
And it's a beautiful, quiet, for the most part, neighborhood. That being said, we have our issues with streetwalking traffic that is frequently connected to drug-related issues.
Mm-hmm.
So we have a network leasing because of neighbors calling. We are a neighborhood that have Ring cameras, and retired people, and people work in various hours, of which I know more neighbors couldn't be here tonight because they're, they're in bullet people. And their concern, as much as mine, in spite of the fact that most of these men they expect to be coming here, would be on the up and up, what kind of friends and other traffic would be coming in and out, visiting them, dating them, picking them up for their jobs, an extraordinary amount of traffic for that many men, whether they were workers from another country, or whether they were drug people, it's the fact that it's a boarding house with extra traffic, and neighbors who have concern for the comings and goings, the constant comings and goings, upsetting the system that is very well in place, the good system. There are a lot of homes in that area that have been dilapidated and deeply concerned, and, yeah, they came in and spent some money. It was not a seven-bedroom house, it was a very large, three-bedroom house that was added on to for a second living. I have a second living in my very small two-bedroom house, but I cannot turn that house into a boarding house without putting people on top of each other. I have a beginning that loves a living room, that's two living spaces. That does not constitute the ability to put up walls, temporary walls or whatever, to turn that into seven bedrooms, and doesn't even meet code.
Okay.
So yes, I'm very much in opposition structurally, it cannot handle the comings and goings and traffic on the flooring and the cabinetry, that's his business, because he owns them. But with Naomi owning rent houses, and I've worked and assisted her in the cleanup after someone has left a rent house, there's a lot of work maintained in maintaining the structural integrity of a home, and I think that's just entirely too many people coming and going. It's a two-car park, driveway, not even, a small carport, and yes, you could fit four small cars in there, but then it's the constant shuffling of vehicles, it's just, it's enough going, I think, and irregardless of this one in there, that many people. No, sir, come in, thank you for listening.
Good, thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Sandra Brown, I'm probably one of the newbies over there, I just bought a house right behind my house.
Okay.
And my concern is to the kids, I have our three kids, three girls and two boys. Great idea what you're doing, a pair of, we're the cut to the kids.
Yeah.
So I.
Very good, thank you. Last but not least, anyone else? Last but not least, anyone else?
Um, West of Bedless Bay. My mother and I, well, most of the neighbors. That house, I know the entire history of that house.
Mm-hmm.
And the interior of that house, because my grandfather was involved in putting that house in there, it's not one house. It's two old houses that were moved in there together and combined. And you've got two seventy-year-old electrical systems, you've got two seventy-year-old, at least, plumbing systems, and you've got two seventy-year-old pool plants. But they put two houses in, connected them together, and then worked around them.
I got you.
So that house is plumbing, electrical, and structure-wise, is a trinity.
Pre-building code, you might say.
Oh, yeah. Because back when they just, my grandfather was, well, I won't say he did things sketch, but they were, the way they did them back then. And it's a little bit scary.
Appreciate that honesty.
Plumbing wires, the neighborhood can't stand it because we're constantly having to have the city come out and clear up the clogs in the plumbing system. And there's not enough parking for a multi-family dwelling. And I don't know if anybody said this, but the school bus picks up the children on that corner. So we don't make a lot of questionable activity going on around it.
Sure, understood. Very good. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Did I address some of the concerns ladies asked?
Uh, you may, yes, please.
As far as the house, regardless, we modeled the house, it doesn't look anything like that anymore. And as far as the plumbing and stuff, you know, if I build, that's what I do, I have twenty-five rent houses. And if there's a problem that comes up, I make sure it gets fixed. And it's, one side of the house is pure and clean, I can easily get underneath it. The other side is, is on the slack. Also have people to do that also, so my concern is the plumbing. The house already had been set up before to have two living areas. So it must have had two families or something living there before I purchased it, I'm not sure, so.
Okay.
This is the first I heard of all the plumbing issues. As far as the curfew every night, it's ten o'clock, and you can only be after five o'clock if you have a job, so. We do this, this is what we do. And Park, you know where Park Street is in Texas? On, off of Summer Hill Road?
Okay.
I do.
Okay. We started when me and Danny Stone, who owns ROH, we started that program there at that house, in that neighborhood. And it's been there for two years and we never had, we had the opposition from the community when we first started. It's just a sober living, which is what I thought we were doing here. And we were suggested to go to a boarding school. I really just wanted to start a sober living, where people are there to support each other and to stay sober and help people transition from, after they've done their time and they get out, to help them transition back into society. We were suggested to do the boarding school, I mean, the boarding house.
Okay.
Okay? This is what I, that's what we've been doing. This man here has, as the leader of it, and we've done it for years and years. And we've done it in Texas County, at the city park. Mine, my other house that I started is just a few blocks away, on Elizabeth Street. It's not too far away, so, in the community, we, we do not have problems. If you, in a boarding school situation, a boarding house or a sober living, if you act up, you're out. I don't have to evict you, I don't have to do anything. I can remove you from the premises. And if anybody wants to do anything, that's even, I mean, if they will show up to a meeting, they get the first day, they get a twenty-five-dollar fine for not showing up to their, to their meeting. And the second time, they're out. It's free. That's the only way to be with someone that's proven that they need that. You have to be like that. You cannot be wish-washing. And so I just want y'all to know that we were in trouble with the situation. People might be out there.
Got it.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Sir, I have a question for you.
How do you do?
Please, go ahead.
Um, so when you purchased this property, did you purchase it with the intent?
No. No, I purchased it to, as a duplex, three-bedroom on each side. But I started, me and Danny, we decided to go different ways. He had different ideas than me. And so that's why, you know, we did that together, so I went out and started my sober living. And this here is just a good place. If it's the number of people, I can come, I can cut that down. It doesn't have to be ten.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
With them having it paying rent, like, don't you have to give thirty days' notice? Like, tenant?
No.
Like, you, you can just evict them? You can? Okay.
In this situation, you do not have to. I can clearly show up and say, "You didn't pay your rent, you didn't follow the rules, and you're out." I don't now have to do an eviction.
Thank you. All right. So the issue before us is primarily, you got-
I just, because I didn't include it in your package, one of the things we look at is land use.
Yes.
And once we rezonate to C4, it also allows duplexes and triplexes and multifamily homes.
Right.
So we, we don't just look at what is being done today, we have to look at the future implications of what's being done.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And one question for you.
Uh, please step to the podium and give us your name?
I, number one, would it not have been a good idea to talk to neighbors before you decided to do this? Before you spent so much money rebuilding this property? Is it? Would it have been a good idea to figure out that people wouldn't be mad at? Definitely is unless the city plans to redo the sewer system. This sewer system is absolutely so antiquated, there are trees growing up in the paths. And they have to go in and cut out trees, and tree stumps in this thing. Unless the city plans to redo the sewer system in this whole area, it's not whole area. I said, these people already came for us to talk.
Yeah.
So it's, with that, many people added to it, it's prone to flooding. It is in, just adjacent to a area that is prone to floodwater. It's prone to flooding, it's prone to sewer problems, and if you don't fix the sewer problem, it really shouldn't be done anymore. But that many people would overwhelm it. But why did they not opt to manage it before they did this?
Well, I don't have an answer for that.
I, well, it just makes sense to do, spend that much money fixing up a house, and then turn around and come here and people go home.
I understand. Thank you.
Mr. Boots, I got a, one more question for the owner. Um, the plumbing in your place, have you checked it, your, the plumbing there?
My lead contractor has twenty years of plumbing. That house, it's, it's good, I got people to talk to. I don't know about the street. I've never, I've never lived there, so that's the whole point.
Well, I think, I think what the neighbors are talking about is the general infrastructure into the main lines.
I get that. I get that.
The main lines are four-inch pipe. The same type of pipe you have coming from your house is the main sewer line.
I got it.
The newer ones are either eight or ten.
Okay.
And so it, it just, it can't handle a lot. And I should only explain my expertise. A lot of the houses in that house, in that neighborhood, I took from condemned, completely gutted them and remodeled. So that's my expertise. I know what I'm talking about. And I happen to know for a fact in that house, there's several wide angles in the plumbing system, so that's wrong.
Yep.
Mr. Mission, is, I don't know if it's in your paperwork or not, but is there, is this an individual file or is there state or federal grant money involved?
Okay. All right. So back to our core issue is a rezone. In order to make this work as a boarding house, it has to be rezoned to C4. I'm, I'm sorry, not C4, uh, R3 residential, right? R4. It's already R3, has to be rezoned, okay. And there's a multiplicity of uses. So our, our job here at the planning and zoning is multifold. We, we not only consider the neighborhood, we not only consider the usage, the intended use of the property, but we consider its highest and best use relative to its zoning in the neighborhood. Now, the issue that I have is to rezone this from a C3 to a, to R3 to an R4 would constitute a spot zoning. You'd have one little piece of property, basically, a little over a quarter acre in the center of a neighborhood that's been rezoned to a higher-density zoning. And as a spot zone, that's generally frowned upon. It's not a good idea, and we try hard not to do it for multiple reasons. And it usually has to do with land use conflicts. So I have that issue. Another issue that I have is the congest, is the neighborhood. The neighborhood is a tight neighborhood. It's really an original plat, I looked at the original plat, and it's, it's small lots, and I noted that most of those houses sit on two and some three lots in order to make a decent-sized piece of property. That, back in the forties, I'm guessing, when that neighborhood was plotted, those were fifty-foot-wide lots and people had little shotgun houses. And then, over time, that's changed. And so in order to get that, you have to buy multiple lots. But I note also, and I drove the neighborhood recently, or today, those streets are small and they're narrow and they're old, and they won't carry a lot of traffic. That, that's a concern as well. And as we did on the other issue that we ruled on, it's in the middle of the neighborhood. If it were on the boundaries of the neighborhood, connected to a better arterial street or collector's street, then the traffic would not be an issue. So I'm just voicing my concerns based on a few technical issues. I wasn't aware of the plumbing. I mean, certainly, the infrastructure in the neighborhood, if everybody's having problems with it, that's not gonna go away until TWU comes in and replaces all of that.
Because it doesn't matter if it's inside the house that has good plumbing, if it doesn't feed into the bank and city, right?
Well, if you, if you're- No, you, if, whatever you're dumping out of the house goes into the main line, and if the main line is not enough to carry the neighborhood, then you're, you're adding to it. But if you, uh, to be, to be fair to the landowner, if he decides, you know, if he were to rent that house, as he originally said, as a duplex apartment, which is agreeable, is possible under the C3, R3 zone, then you've got two families in there, and they're gonna also use the plumbing. So you're probably not gonna add a real significant amount of inflow to the plumbing, but if they're having trouble with it already, that, that's, it's only gonna continue, not gonna get any, any better. So as far as land use, I mean, that's really not a consideration for us, but it is a concern for the neighborhood. But now, we, we have a way to get around the boarding house thing. You know, we're, we're working on a, a new regulation, a new zoning, a special use permits that would allow group homes, family homes, and care homes that wouldn't be a designation in the, uh, the boarding house issue. But in order to do that, that ordinance would have to be passed, fleshed out and passed by us, and then approved by the city board of directors, and then the applicant could come back and, and do that, reapply. It wouldn't necessarily be a reaplication, but we would have to table this and then hear it again after we finished the ordinance, provided the ordinance didn't take over ninety days. If it took over ninety days, then his application goes into effect automatically according to our bylaws. So that's a concern there. But on the land use issues, well, I hope I've made my thoughts on that clear, so.
Well, I think the-
It's not, I mean, I, I don't, I'm with most of the residents here. I don't disagree with the application. It, it's, it's very beneficial and good for, uh, good for the city, good for the people that are in it. But we have, it's delicate to where you put it. We have, we have to consider the neighborhood, we have to consider the, if it'll hold it, if it'll support it, if it's a proper land use for the neighborhood and for the, for the place that it's gonna be located. So those are my concerns. Any, any, any further discussion? Anybody want to talk about?
Well, just a little bit. Everything that's been said, I totally, I understand, but the main thing, I think, that a boarding house does not need to be smack in the middle of an established neighborhood. These people have invested, some people a long time, one lady's brand-new, it doesn't matter. I just, I'm not for-
I think that's inappropriate use in the middle of the neighborhood.
You're right. It, it, this is an established, it's not open spaces and somebody's trying to figure out what to do with it. Y'all knew what to do with it. She wanted a house, a home. And I just, I, I think it's very similar to the other actions that we've taken, with it, it's just not applicable to this neighborhood. That's my thoughts.
Any other, any other discussion, questions?
No, I'm in agreement with Chairman Hickerson about just having a problem with putting such a project in, in an established neighborhood like this.
Anyone else? All right, having said all of that, Chair accepts a motion. One way or the other. I'm sorry?
Motion to deny.
Motion to deny, was that?
Second.
And a second? Call roll.
Anita Pickett?
Yes.
Anderson Neal?
Yes.
Dr. Hickerson? Chris Owens?
Yes.
Cory Mobbs?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes. All right, motion fails. There is a recourse. You can take this before the board of directors for appeal on any of our decisions, I believe. No, the zoning failed, the rezoning failed. That, that's correct, I'm sorry. I missed, what did Ms. Walsh say? Misspoke?
Wait a minute, let's go through this again.
No. All right. So just to be clear, the rezoning failed and the zone stays as it is. And he, the property owner does have the right to appeal before the board of directors. He also has the standing right to use his property as a duplex or a rental unit, as he originally had stated, so, so that everyone's clear. All right. Moving on to item four. Thank you, sir. There's another rezoning. I'm gonna butcher this name, I'm sure, Mr. Werthel, is that how it's pronounced?
Werthel.
Werthel? Uh-
Werthel.
Yeah. Okay. Item number four is a rezoning request by Mark Worntel and Donnie Seeley and D, TDC Contractors LLC, Arkansas Boulevard, Texcana, Arkansas, to rezone parcels OO nineteen thirty-six double O and OO nineteen thirty-six O one from C four Crossroads Business Park to a planned unit development for the purpose of constructing seven single-family homes. Property is located a hundred and twenty-one feet north of the intersection of Oak Hollow Lane and Mount Olive Drive and is legally described as parcel northeast, northwest, southwest, conditioning W one, uh, double O nineteen thirty-six double O and part northeast, northwest, southwest containing partial double O one nineteen thirty-six O one, Texcana, Arkansas, Miller County containing two acres more or less. Ms. Jamie?
So, um, the applicants are requesting to rezon this to a planned unit development for the purpose of building seven homes. This year, this is, this is drive, this is Mount Olive. Right here is where we approved college to build, I think it was five houses building.
Yes.
And then there's two parcels in between and then there's just these here. Uh, it is currently zone C four. As you know, that C four area is not developed the way we had hoped it would develop with the business. Um, this up here, college, we give rezon to planned unit development, developing houses there. It is R two over here. We've got this little weird R one commercial spot, but most of them are R two. There is water and sewer on the east side of the property on Mount Olive. And we'll have to pour under the street for the water and they will be running, so I have to run utilities down the front of the property, um, to connect to the house. This is the plat, you should have a copy of it. Here are seven houses. This is the home, that's the fire department, this is the applicant who turn around. So I believe I got that here.
Well, let's talk about the technical aspects of this plat. Mr. Building Inspector, are you standing in for the public works? Can you speak on this? Now, as a PUD development, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but as a PUD development, that gives the board wide latitude in determining application and design. We can adjust and modify and we know exactly what's going there to start with. And that's the purpose of a PUD. And the Board of Directors, uh, years ago, made it very clear on this C four zone that any development that went in there would have to be a PUD overlay. And we weren't really, uh, they really wouldn't support a rezon to a pure residential like for a subdivision. So PUD gives us greater latitude. Am I correct on that? Okay. So talk a little bit to me about the, uh, about this road or the street going in and why it's not a, a standard city street. Maybe we've got an engineer that can speak to that? There you go. State your name for the record, please.
My name's Joe Schalke with MTG Engineers, uh, representing, um, Donnie and Mark here. The street wouldn't, doesn't have a right of way going down it, so we were following with kind of a, with maybe a more sort of twenty-foot line, believes what's on there. So we wrote it and, um, we were advised to have a full cul-de-sac raised for EMS.
So why not twenty-six feet?
Well, it wouldn't be a road for the city necessarily, it was for, um, it would stay underneath, uh, this.
It's my understanding from health workers that there's not enough right of way there in order to, um, of the street.
So like the rest of the neighborhood's twenty-six?
Not enough right of way in, in, in what way? Uh, explain that. Expound on that.
So, uh, if, if part of this road is designated as right of way, the city would take, take ownership of it after construction and the property owners, their lots would in, say, ten feet south of that road. Right now it has a, right now we're planning to have it be an access easement to where though that road is still maintained by the property owners.
The road will be maintained by the property owners?
Will the road.
So when there's a pothole, you can't go and ask the board to fix it with city funds? The city, they would have to come up with the funds?
It's not, it's not a right of way in it. It wouldn't be a public road.
Well, when you're building this, let, let, just, just do a mind exercise here and just say we're doing a subdivision and that's your plat, that's your preliminary plat. Well, you, in a subdivision, you designate your right of way. You, you allocate right of way. So you're saying that the setback, the building, property building setback line would be less than the required twenty-five foot if you designated right of way? Is that correct? Is that what I'm, what I'm seeing?
If you designate a right of way, if your building setback would start from the right of way line as opposed to you say property.
Unless the building setback line was reduced, as it was down here on property number seven, which you had to reduce it because of the cul-de-sac.
How do I get that cul-de-sac to bump out even further for the right of way?
So how, since the city won't own that property, own that street, who, who will? It, we got, you calling that a private road or an extended driveway or what would that be called?
We call it private driveway with a cross-access easement for those lots.
Okay. And the utility easement is on the back of the homes or, or where?
It, so the cross-access easement will also have a utility easement within it. If you can see the red line on the north side and the blue line looks like.
Okay.
Is that a seventy-five foot driveway? Is that what the numbers are? Or did I misread that?
Oh, the link. So the building layouts are conceptual in there. So we put a force back, um, to kind of line up particularly block one. But yes, you, you are seeing on there a seventy-five foot driveway.
Also from the home out to the street, seventy-five foot, that's what we're seeing there. Twelve, twelve foot wide driveway, seventy-five foot long? No, that's. Please, please, yes.
My name's Donnie Seeley for TDC General Contractors. What we're giving you is the proposed house plans that we'll be building there. Every driveway that we got, looking at this right here, we will not do a seventy-five foot driveway. The driveway, the, the house will be set up closer, micro better for houses on our other subdivision.
Uh huh.
Thirty-five, forty foot, whatever it may be. So, uh, this driveway that's showing on here, that's, that's not going to be the way for a seventy-five foot driveway.
That's what I was wondering.
Actually set up where, you know, you're, you got your, uh, utility easements and then from that point back to your driveway, uh, it may be fifty feet, forty-five feet. So a normal driveway from the property.
Well, I'm looking at the plat here and the math doesn't add up if you've got a thirty foot building line but a seventy-five foot driveway. So yeah, there's an error there.
So that, I mean, there would be road, there would be room to add. Is that what it's called, right of way? Like when a car can go this way and a car can go that way? Like, is that what right of way means?
Your right, right of way is a, um, let's just start out like a width of, let's say, what would say, your road, your road may be twenty-six feet long.
Yeah.
Your right of way might be sixty feet wider. And that's so you can have, you can have other things in there like ditches, utilities also built on right of way to impact. So sometimes a good, you get a right of way might be, might be like the little top lines you should have backed up.
So Donnie, will this be, will this be considered a private road?
Yes. This, this is actually a private road. The city does not maintain the road. It's been completed.
Well, that's not.
And they'll know that when they buy it? Okay.
Absolutely. This is very transparent. Not, um, simple, like, but how, will these property owners, if they buy that, have it in the road? Have it in the road? They're going to be, they're going to maintain the road just like I do out in Sugar Creek, Sugar Creek, or Sugar Creek. We have to take care of our roads. The city does not take care of roads. You take care of it. We take care of it. But each property owner has to take care of roads. We, we have a homeowner association there. It does, we have to, we have a homeowner association here. Those seven homes, we have a small homeowner association that has to take care of that road. That's, that's the reason why I, like, where I live in Sugar Creek, same thing, we have a homeowner association and we have to, basketball issue, whether the city don't take care, we take care of it. It's going to be the same thing. It's kind of a many homeowner association, I think, for those seven homes.
But you're saying that though, is some, is there an assessment per month of, for maintenance or something like that? Or is it just done as needed or? Pardon me?
No, and we're out there, there are no cities from the city whatsoever. It's just, I know a way. Yeah, but.
Pardon me?
So somebody sets up the HOA to figure out a price it would cost?
In, in your subdivision, Donnie, you've got more of a, a proper road, a proper street. I mean, you don't, your streets in your subdivision are wider, twenty foot, are they not?
Yeah, they're twenty, probably twenty-six.
I mean, you, you have an asphalt curb and gutter street. Is this also going to be?
No, this, this is not going to be an asphalt curb and gutter street.
What's it going to be?
It's going to be more, I mean, it's going to be asphalt, but it's, you know, it's going to be with the cement stabilization and everything, like, you know, label design.
Okay. Will not.
What's a curb and gutter?
Well, curbs and gutters, just, just like the street at your house. There's a curb.
Yes. Okay. Sorry.
Well, I, okay, I understand the plan now. I, I was confused about the plan, so now I got it. Uh, I've got some reservations about that, seriously. Uh, we're talking, this is long-term because you're going to build these homes and you could easily have a life expectancy of those homes seventy-five years before they become so derelict. Well, that's not even true there. We have homes in Texcana that were built when the house, when the, when the town was founded that are still being occupied. So, uh, you have to think, I have, I, I think long-term because that, that neighborhood once established i- is permanent. It's going to be there unless that property was bought and everything was destroyed for a better use. And I have, I have some issues that the original owners, as well as the subsequent owners, fifty years from now, are not going to keep that street. That, it's just, in practical terms, it's not going to happen. I, I'd feel much more comfortable if you built a, a spec street that was engineered and, and the city would accept it and, and take over its maintenance.
I have no problem in the city taking over the street, you know?
But it'll have to be a spec street.
I mean, Joe has no problem in designing it that way.
Okay.
You know, we were just trying to, and, and let me, I want to make this comment and I don't mean any sarcasm.
No, please, please, we're talking it out. Let's go.
Mount Olive Drive right there, where this project has been, is nothing but crap.
It's not a good street either. I understand that completely.
So you want the city to take over a street when they don't take over Mount Olive Drive?
Yeah, yeah, I.
That's my point there.
Well, your point is well-taken and I can appreciate, I, I appreciate that. And, and my, my hope has always been is as that area develops, the, the city will ultimately be encouraged to go in there and make Mount Olive a, a genuine road, a genuine street.
Well, that's, that's always been our desire too.
Yeah.
But, you know, we built Mount Olive, had this church there.
Yeah.
Nice church. We had another way to come in there off today that there's a little street, can we go back to that? Water and sewer. Uh, I can't find, and there's a little street, where you get to this property?
Oh.
A little street out there that has water and sewer to it?
Barkwood.
Now, that was.
Yeah.
I can see where the water sewer is to the left. Okay? She's got a neighbor back there and she says, I want to build a brand new house. She met with me last night.
Right.
So we're helping.
Yeah, yeah.
That community of building apartments. But my concern is that we built a lot of stuff out there.
Right.
The city's never worked on that street.
I understand.
So in my situation, I'm sitting there saying, we have a many homeowner association. When they close their house, there is an affidavit that says the homeowner association what their responsibility is for that street. And that is enforced. We can't enforce the city to go out there and build a street.
Right.
So I don't have any money.
Right.
My view is let the homeowners, like I do in my neighborhood, take care of our own streets and it's not a burden on the city. That's the reason we're trying to do that. That's where I'm in on that, on the street, being a private street.
Well, I follow that logic. I just, I.
But what you, what you were saying was about designing the streets. We have engineers designing streets.
Oh, I, sure. Yeah, exactly.
And we have no problem with that. Wouldn't you think the radius on the cul-de-sac there? All right, oh, the radius is already city required.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you have to, you have. Have to do that for fire code.
Right.
Fire agent has to have a place to turn around, so.
We're not trying to cut any corners.
No, I understand that. I understand. No, I, I know, I follow your logic completely and I, I, it has its merits. But for me, I'd much rather there be an actual city street there.
I just want to clarify that, you know, you have, up here. In the situation where we have a many homeowner association, people. I, I, like I said, I just want to clarify. Definitely who will take care of that on a private street. I welcome the city to take that street over.
Yeah.
But when it starts failing, if it does, that, you're not going to make us have a private street back. No.
I understand.
So if it does happen, and the city's responsible, can't get them on Mount Olive, how are we going to get them on that little satchel?
Right.
That's, that's not your.
Well. Yeah, past performance is an indicator of future performance. I understand that logic, but it's, it's, it doesn't hold in every case. And I mean, if we're trying to make improvements going forward, Tyler went out last year, was it, I guess, a year before, maybe it was last, last summer and, and graded and gravelled Mount Olive and made it thousand percent better than it was before. And, uh, you know, the second half of Mount Olive down there is, is still potholed asphalt overlay, but, you know, that'll all have to be corrected as well. And now with the subdivision, that's. And now with the subdivision that's, has already been planted and yet to be developed directly across the street from where your subdivision goes in, that road becomes a cut-through and Mount Olive then becomes much more important. If you put your property on that, then Mount Olive again has another incentive, and so at some point, Tyler will have to designate some money, some budget money to go in there and, and do a project on Mount Olive and try to turn it into a real road, real street. And that's not to, not to try, we're not trying, I'm not saying we're trying to force a hand, but in the logical uh progression of things would seem to tend in that direction, because a gravel road's not gonna carry all that traffic once it really comes to fullness. So, how, if we, if we went in there, I mean, being a PUD, we could modify that thirty-foot setback without any problems and you could shorten everything up and give yourself enough room there for your standard city curb and gutter street and build that, and I know that would impact your project and, and cost and expense, but I'm just speaking for myself, I'd feel much more comfortable if that were the case.
Well, that one, the project would have to, the cost would be a factor in what we're doing.
Well, cost is always a factor for a developer and certainly, and I appreciate that, and we're in difficult financial times right now and I'm, I'm not, I'm simply, I'm surely not trying to burden you with more cost, I'm just expressing my concerns going forward.
And I'm, I'm not against, I wanna be clear, I'm not against him, the city taking the street over or us having a private street.
Yeah.
Homeowners have to maintain it, and I'm not opposed to him designing it that the city's happy with.
Right.
You know, to a certain extent.
Yeah.
You know, if it's gonna cost another two hundred thousand dollars, then it's gonna, it's gonna kill the deal for your car who lives in California, you know, he was, uh, this was his family property.
Right.
And he's come here to California and that's, that's what he wanted to do, and uh, you know, so we're, we're doing everything we can to help you, you know, develop the property.
Okay, I got it. Well-
Is seven the sweet spot for houses to make it profitable?
Yes, man, we really need a eight, but when Ms. Jamie threw that cul-de-sac in there, kinda, kinda kicked it out.
'Cause I mean, Collins doing five-
How big are the houses planning?
Fourteen forty.
Fourteen forty?
I got a calculator out real quick.
Did you?
I did, that, you, sorry, I-
Y'all know where Franklin Street is?
Yeah.
Uh, there's three houses there in Franklin, then I built, uh, these houses, designed just by a couple of the two.
Okay.
My daddy took me in Franklin, there's a couple others there.
Well, I know, I know of two other small little, let's call them, for the sake of the conversation, subdivisions here in Texacoana. One's out off of Meadows Road and the other is off of Rondo Road, or not Rondo, but two thirty-seven, uh, over behind the airport. And these are, the one on Meadows Road, I think there's four houses, and the one off of, uh, two thirty-seven, I think there's also four houses. And these were originally built as, uh, family-owned land and we're gonna divide it up and Jane, you build a house here and Tom, you build one there, and George, you build one there, and, and that's how it all went. And then we had, we put in an extended driveway that would be a, a private road going to each house, and we'll all just kinda take care of the roads. Well, over time, and it was a short period of time, that didn't happen because Tom sold his house to God knows who, and Jane down there is trying to sell and, and all of a sudden you got strangers living there that, I don't know, that's a city road, ain't it? Get the city out here, fix that pothole. No, it's your road, you gotta fix, I'm not fixing that road, I don't care what I sign. So, those problems will exist, they will happen, you, you know yourself.
But I also know they're gonna be common citizens, and we have to put the street in, and when the city will come out and take care of a street.
Right.
So, it's counted to a sore-
Yeah, it, it's a damned if you do and damned if you don't, and I understand that.
Yeah, and I don't think, I don't think the development is a negative development, and I don't think we're looking at it as negative, uh, I think it's positive.
Well, I do too, I-
I think it's just the street, what we're gonna do with the street.
I agree, it's a positive development, anytime you build ha- homes for people to live in, as single-family purchased homes, it is a net positive for everybody.
Well, and that's one of the deep-sized homes here, we go-
I was gonna ask, why the, why the fourteen forty, a lot of those houses around, you know?
Because there is a window where people can't afford a two thousand square foot house that I'm building over, I could retire.
Hi.
And they can't afford a house in Deer Meadow, if the lots are a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Jeez.
And there's people that need homes, so we decided to, Mr. Clark and Martin, myself decided, what can we get to help the people in Texacoana to afford a house, and that's fourteen, fifteen hundred square foot homes.
Yeah.
So, because these homes today, that home right there, you take fifteen hundred, multiply it times two hundred dollars a square foot.
Geez.
Yeah.
That's what those homes are costing.
Jeez.
And the homes that are on, retire when they did eat, over there, they're four hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes. So, not everybody can qualify, interest coming up the last two weeks, is because the Fed dropped their rate, mortgage rates went up.
Yeah.
People can't qualify for those big homes, so that's why we decided to build the smaller homes for single, uh, you know, part-time home buyers or for a young couple, they can afford something better.
Well, there's a market for that, and I mean, and they'll sell, there won't be any issues, I don't think, but-
Will they make two or three bedroom, three, three, two baths?
No, they're three bedroom and two baths.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't have any, just two bedrooms, they're all three bedroom and two baths, uh, breakfast area, kitchen, two-car garage.
Well, as a developer, you've got a bill for your market, so that's understood.
I saw the cute little single-car garages on that eighteen-ten, that, that's cute.
It is, and they are cute. I, I, we did, but I didn't do it, but Donnie, like, I've closed their private street.
Yeah.
I wanted to clarify, how they're gonna be taking care of it.
Oh, sure, sure. No, I, I-
In that, working in their neighborhood, there's a couple of neighborhoods that work in, I'm not so-
Well, and, and back to the point that we made about your neighborhood, Donnie, I mean, you, you, you're living in seven hundred thousand dollar homes in a seven hundred thousand dollar neighborhood, these people are gonna be living in a two hundred thousand dollar neighborhood, can they come up with the money to fix the street?
Yeah, but see, I, I have a different outlook on that. Yes, I'm fortunate and blessed to live where I live, but these people are gonna be fortunate and blessed to live where they're live, and to them, that home is just as nice to them as my home is to me.
Oh, that, that wasn't what I was, yeah, no, I understand, and that's not what I'm talking about exactly, what I'm saying, if, if they can't afford, well, maybe-
How do you figure out HOA dues? Or who figures that up?
The, myself, Mark, and Mr. Clark from Detroit, California, will sit down, and Mr. Clark will have the package, be the president of the homeowner association.
Okay.
And then Mark and myself will be what we call, you know, the homes that they wanna build or we're gonna build in there, it has to be approved by an architecture committee, which is Mark and myself, uh, not only any, just any home we build there. So, we'll sit down and we'll determine before the first home is, is built or purchased, what those fees will be. Homeowners will know that upfront. They're also gonna know what postal service they're gonna have there, whether it's that box or whatever, so-
Yeah.
Uh, we run across that, you remember? But, uh, they'll know upfront, and they'll know what the cost is. How we determine that is basically on quarterly, uh, quarterly basis, and those small homes there, you may be talking, uh, a hundred and fifty dollars a quarter, and that money is just accumulated, you know? In my neighborhood, I think it's two hundred and fifty dollars a quarter, three hundred dollars a quarter.
Really?
Is what our homeowner association fees are, so we're, you know, we're not gonna break on that, but they know that money is accumulated or being repaired, they can own that street. So, money will be allocated, you know, it may not be five years, six years, it may be like, they're a quarter.
Yeah, yeah.
And we set aside, you know, repairs.
Well, a properly-run, properly-run homeowner's association will work every time and if it's done properly and there's, you know, you don't have such a, a huge group of, of residents there that you got opportunity for dissent, so long as everybody's in agreement and knows that upfront, but there is potential for trouble and, and, and I-
There is any situation?
There is, and I, and I'm concerned, uh, once again, I'm concerned about long-term, uh, you know, what's the life of that street, thirty years max before you have to re- really do a rebuild or redone? So, you know, if you're gonna do a, a, a firm base asphalt overlay, you're gonna have to come back to thirty years and overlay it again, and that won't be cheap, and will there be enough money and will the residents wanna do that? Plus, that's only a twenty-foot street, so you, if anybody parks in the street and the fire department shows up, they're not gonna be able to get down the street, and there will be people parking in the street unless you, by your homeowner's association, absolutely, uh, deny that, and then there's somebody there to enforce it, so-
Well, I think there, I think the driveway, Joe may have been looking at this, you know, and, and there is a city requirement of parking in the driveway, too, it's logical, I don't know if it's two and a half car, you get, you get, yeah, like, two and a half car for driveway.
Right, right.
Uh, so, you know, if we can save, we might get three cars in the driveway, you got the garage and two cars in the driveway, so-
Yeah.
Uh, but, you know, go back and, and I don't, it's definitely nice toes, but, you know, we're talking about a little private street that's five or six hundred feet long, something like that.
Yeah.
Uh, let's go out to Al Ridge and look at that chip seal out there in Al Ridge, that's gravel, that's-
Already, yeah, yeah, sure.
You know, so-
It was gonna be gravel when they laid it.
So, my, you know, my deal is, that's in seagulls now.
Yeah.
And maybe go out there and put curb and gutter.
Right.
There's eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollar homes down there. We have the tip that we can see. Yeah, well, I understand, so, not stepping toe, I'm, I'm, I'm just looking at, I've got Runwall that's out there, and then Spears is out there, they fight it every day, it goes, it's just more of a chip seal process, I think? Well, they have it, the developers have never been, the city will not, we found a bench in the concrete.
Yes, yeah.
What was this about?
Well, I like your, I like your development and I like what you're trying to do, I mean, I honestly do, Donnie, and, uh, it, it will be a positive, I just, I'm hung, I'm sorry, I, I'm hung up on this private road deal and plus the small road, even if it were a private road but a little bit wider, I'd be more comfortable with that perhaps, but-
If we're not looking at it being a little bit wider, uh, you know, we can make it a little bit wider, but I just, as far as going and developing a city street like Deer Meadow, like we done, or, you know, curb and gutters and all that, you know, we're just asking for a little leaning, you know, that part being a private driveway or a city maintenance, we don't have a problem with that.
Right.
You know, we work with logic, we work with power, and, you know, make it work.
Could it be twenty-six feet wide like the other streets with, and it'd still be a private road, or no, it would?
Honestly, I think twenty-four feet is plenty wide.
Okay.
Myself.
Yeah, I think that's what our streets are in our neighborhood.
I walked mine, 'cause I was real confused, and so I went out and got my little wheel.
To me, as a developer-
Right.
-I've done several, I think in this situation, to me, twenty-four would be plenty wide enough for a street.
Gotcha.
As both cars can go down and trucks, the fire truck can get down there and turn in the radius.
Uh, I agree, I would agree with that.
So, that's what Mark, what do you think?
So, your plan is to not, i- it's not gonna be a curb street, it's gonna be a, a, a street with, with ditches or swales on both sides? Drainage?
Yes.
How does that prop, which directions does that property run? Whi- which way would the drainage go?
North, it's primarily, but it's split probably around lot, lot two, kind of heads more in northwest and then three through seven, and then head out towards the existing ditch.
There'd be no, no real drainage structures put in there, it would all be surface drain?
Yeah, and it, and that might get surface drain pretty good, it's empty date pretty good, that's the size and after, we're trying to-
You, without, well, you'd be throwing the water off on the property next to you?
No, the actual, uh, work is done, we're about lot two, it, it, we're not in existing drainage pattern, so, yeah, we put a ditch in primarily along the head out to the existing type, yeah, the side to Mount Olive.
Take it out to Mount Olive? Any other questions for, for Donnie or the, I'm sorry, I forgot, your, your engineer? Is he? Anyone?
Thank you all very much.
All right, so as a PUD, could, could we all, or do we all generally agree on the basic layout here? Any, any comment on that? Any agreement on that? Uh, what about, uh, requiring a twenty-four-foot-wide street rightaway or a street, is that, is that agreeable to anyone, everyone?
That makes me happier.
Me happier as well.
'Cause if there's an emergency and you're flying to get to your kid, I, I wanna know that I can fly-
Yeah, yeah.
-to get to my kid.
I'm sorry, you don't have it.
Yes, sir, you have. Yes, sir, you have.
All right, so we're, we're gonna call this a preliminary plat, perhaps, or do we need to see another plat? Uh, Jamie, what do we need to hear, what do we need to do next?
We need, well, they'll need to make the changes you request, and then we'll have some final plat.
Okay.
Those changes.
So, the item for vote to, would there be an item for vote tonight, or are we suspending this until we get further information?
No, you need to approve, you can approve the preliminary plat and make the changes that you request.
Approve the PUD rezon, and then require a, a final plat, and then it, it would need to be approved. Well, it would go before the board of directors for the rezoning approval, before we would see the final plat?
Yes.
So, that would be a, that would be a yes or no point at that, at that point.
Yes, so the rezoning would go before first meeting in November.
Okay.
And then, uh, the, the final plat approval is on us, that doesn't go in there.
So, that would come back after, after the board heard it, whether they approved or disapproved, they could, uh, override us in either direction, whichever way we go, and if they, uh, yeah. All right. What kind of motion do we need? Rezone the PUD?
Well, I'm glad nobody passed me to say nothing, I'm looking over here crying.
The question before us is to rezon this parcel of land-
I know.
-from C four Crossroad Business Park to PUD.
Yes.
And, uh, the separate item would be the plat approval. So, as a PUD, we have our preliminary here, and then we would need a final before we could, uh, any construction could begin, and we need to- could, any construction could begin and we need to hammer out the fine details.
Right.
So, if we approve, let's say this.
Yeah.
The motion tonight is for the rezone only. We've rezoned, yes or no? Chair accepts a motion.
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
All right, call roll, please.
Anita Pickett?
Yes.
Anderson Neal?
Yes.
Dr. Hickerson?
Yes.
Chris Owens?
Yes.
Cory Mobbs?
Yes.
And Boots Thomas?
Yes. All right, so motion to rezone to PUD carries. And as we said, this goes before the board of directors for their consideration on the November 4th board meeting. And, uh... Let's see. Now, we need to have a vote on the preliminary plat, let's call this, or the preliminary layout. So, what I would suggest, or what I'm gonna recommend, if it's even appropriate to do so, is we would recommend this preliminary plat for this PUD outline in its general configuration with a request to increase the street to a 24-foot wide street and to give us a, on the final plat, or the plat that will return to us, uh, a drainage, uh, program, how, where the water's gonna drain to, how it's gonna drain, uh, where the utilities are gonna be, the fire hydrants, et cetera, et cetera, just like you would on any subdivision final plat. We need to know all of that for its final approval and then we'll either, we'll either approve that or recommend further changes. Uh, also, this is contingent upon the board of directors approving our approval, so as you understood about that. So, the chair accepts a motion for acceptance of this preliminary plat for this PUD zone.
To move.
Development.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, need a second? Can we have a second? Call roll, please.
Anita Pickett?
Yes.
Anderson Neal?
Yes.
Dr. Hickerson? Chris Owens? Cory Mobbs?
Yes.
Yes.
And Boots Thomas?
Yes. Very good. Thank you, Donnie. We're, uh, we're gonna labor you to death, but we want it done right. And I know you do too.
Sketch? Sketchy?
Sketchy? Nothing sketchy.
Thank you. Yee-haw. There you go.
You wanna be on the neighborhood Facebook page?
All right. Find my agenda page here. Get going again. Okay. Having hashed that out. Item number five, bylaws adoption. You have the...
I've provided you all a copy of the bylaws that we hashed out in the bylaw workshop. I hope you've all reviewed it, the changes that you stick to and anything else for it up.
Looked good to me.
You did good, Mr. Nick.
So, we can adopt those tonight?
You can say it.
And then get them to, I don't think the board has the authority, I think we've got the right.
I move to adopt them.
Second.
Were no questions, no exclusions, no additions? All right, you have a motion to adopt, second? Need a second?
Second.
All right, motion, a second, call roll.
Anita Pickett?
Yes.
Anderson Neal?
Yes.
Dr. Hickerson?
Yes.
Chris Owens?
Yes.
Cory Mobbs?
Yes.
And Boots Thomas?
Yes. Very good. Item number six, this is the ordinance revisions that we had the little workshop on, resolve contradictions between the definitions of loft apartment and the use by right, conditional use listed in the use matrix.
So, this came up as a result of that, remember that apartment last month that we turned down that they wanted to put in use above their office?
Mm-hmm.
So, in our definition of loft apartment, loft apartments can only exist in C2 central business district, which is downtown. But in our use matrix, we allow loft apartments in O1 and C1.
Oops.
So, we either need to take this out of the definition or we need to take it out of here. And I, I would like to throw something in here that has occurred to me is, what would we consider a garage apartment if somebody wanted to put a garage apartment on the apartment?
Well, garage apartments are already part of our residential ordinances, are they not?
Like an existing house and they build a dwelling above their garage?
Well, in the old, in the old part of town, there's, there's detached garages and a lot of those have apartments or, you know, up above them. Most of them are there for family use, but sometimes they're rented.
What's O1?
O1, office of quiet business.
Let's type this.
Did you find something interesting?
Well, Roger's, Roger's pulling up the use matrix and it's not showing, well, mine's showing. So, let me research this a little further.
Okay.
Let me research that a little further.
So, you wanna bring that back to us next month?
Well, apparently our residential zone use matrix and our commercial use matrix don't match. So, let me, let me do some more.
Sound like a little more housekeeping.
Yeah, there isn't. All right, let me do, let me do some more.
Okay. Chair accepts a motion to table item number six for review at a later date? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? The item is tabled. All right.
Now, I'm on a mission, that hang, but I'm where, 'cause I have it.
Item number seven, care facilities, group home ordinance review and adoption.
Now, this is the ordinance that we hashed out on the last workshop.
Yep.
Yep.
We can adopt some of it, if you guys have issues with it, we'll have it in the workshop.
So, the, what we're seeing here in front of us are the amended and adjusted things we spoke about?
Well, this is a whole new ordinance for special use permits.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
But we took the Little Rock ordinance and then amended and adjusted.
Yes, starting with the Little Rock ordinance as a basis and...
This is when we all sat and squared, Ms. Bell, then you wrote notes and got a whole ordinance, okay?
And again, the difference between the special use permit and the conditional use is, conditional use permits run with the land. So, if I give you a conditional use permit to sell, to have horses, so does property.
Those next people can still have horses.
Special use permits are non-transferring in any way, shape, or form.
And it goes every year?
Word.
All right, on the last page of that, when we go to Article 3, special district regulations and we're looking at that, uh, metric there, under R1, R2, R3, RM, and R4, and R1 overlay, we're so, we're seeing down at the bottom, uh, family care facility, group home, group care facility as special use permits allowed under all residential zones, uh, would require a special use permit allowed as a use by right under R4, which is our high-density residential zone that would be, think of as apartments. So, that's allowed under apartments, but requires a special use permit under all residential zones.
And we differentiate between those three types of facilities, the amount of supervision they would have.
The amount of people.
And how many people they would have, well, I think we, they all have the same number.
Yeah.
How much supervision they would have.
Now, relative to what we did tonight earlier on that, uh, on that home on Betty Street and what we did before that on the other place, our big objection was a rezone in the middle of the, a middle of an existing neighborhood. But with a special use permit, no rezone would be required. But we're still faced with the possibility of having one of these facilities in the middle of a neighborhood, an established neighborhood, and R1 being the most grievous. And I'm sure the reason that that property over on College Hill was zoned R3 is because it's, uh, a higher density because of the small-planted lots, even though the homes are built on multiple lots. So, that zone would be more appropriate as an R1, but it's an old zone that probably existed back when the lots were tiny and the houses were tiny also. So, our, our one, our one thing that we wanted to talk about, or I wanted to talk about, is how to come up with an exclusionary clause that would give us some leverage to not put these facilities in the middle of established neighborhoods. If that facility were on a collector's street, let's say, even on Betty Street, if you went east on Betty over to Lion Avenue and that house was facing Lion Avenue, that facility would be less grievous at Lion Avenue than it would be in the center of the neighborhood. And I would have been more, uh, more willing to approve it if it were more isolated, let's say, on a major collector. Uh, the same as the one that we did before, it was in the center of a neighborhood, if it had been further south and on 24th Street, it would have been more applicable, in my thoughts, even though it was still a residential neighborhood, so... And I've read the ACA, American with Disabilities Act, and there's strict limitations for a city that prevent you from saying no, you just simply can't. Under certain conditions, you can't say no. And, uh...
They labeled them as ICD-10 codes.
Right.
And labeled them as a disability.
So, in that case, it, it wouldn't even come before this board, it wouldn't even be heard. It would be a staff thing that, okay, here's your permit, go at it. So, but otherwise, if we do the special use permit, I, do you know of any language that we could do that would make that exclusionary where we could not, we'd have an out so we couldn't, we couldn't put that in the center of a neighborhood and be in trouble?
Well, I mean, we've put in here that we have to consider access to public or quasi-public transportation, that probably doesn't end this issue.
Well, that gets us closer.
Yeah.
And, and also, your, your provision there where we, um, existing zoning and land use permits, uh, what am I saying, access to needed support services, uh, development with adjacent community and neighborhoods, I mean, those are things that we think about, we have, we can take into provision, availability of adequate off-street parking, et cetera. If we, if we made this, well, I, if we made it unacceptable in an R1, I don't think we could work around that, I, I think they, that wouldn't be allowed, I'm, I'm thinking. Legally, uh...
Tyler and I just...
I don't think we could defend that in court, I don't believe.
And that was our take on it.
Well...
When they gave substance abuse a disease code?
Yes, yes.
It changed everything.
No, well, that, I mean, you know, if he was applying for that under the ADA, he wouldn't even have to come for us, he'd just open the thing up and go with it.
Well, the only one that's automatically approved is developmentally.
Developmentally handicapped, yes.
Those you can't turn down.
Right. Well, you, you almost have the same leverage with, with the drug abuse and alcohol thing. You, I mean, it's, it'd be hard to defend in court.
Now, them coming out of prison, like he was saying.
But, well...
Well, there is this thing, and I mean, we all, in my 20-some years in doing this, there's always a not in my neighborhood coalition, no matter what you wanna do, there's some, you know, we don't, we don't disagree with it, we just don't want it in our neighborhood. And you have to come back, I have to come back to think about this, is that, in a sense, they're correct, it, it's just not an appropriate use in the middle of a single-family residential neighborhood. It may be completely benign and cause zero problems, but the potential for problems is there, plus the fact that the individuals that live in the neighborhood just simply feel uncomfortable about it and don't want it there. And, and you, homeowners and property owners do have a say in how their property is used and what, what happens around them, and I mean, there is part of our rights as American citizens and homeowners.
That is true, but the HUD says that you cannot take into consideration adjacent property ownership.
Oh, I know that, I, I know that. But on the ground, HUD says one thing, but on the ground, something else is happening. And of course, I mean, we can't go against the law, the law says you have to turn right instead of left, well, then you have to turn right, so that's all it is to it.
I can try to hash out some vocabulary for that, that it has to be on a major road or a collector, um...
Well, I think it would be more favorable, I'm just talking out loud here, we're doing a thought, a thought exercise. It, it, to me, it would be more favorable if it were closer to a collector, and doesn't have to be a major collector or an arterial, it just needs to be a collector's street and not a neighborhood street. And that keeps it out of the center of a neighborhood and keeps the conflicts down. And conflicts are an issue, things, conflicts are things that we certainly have to think about in land use, that's why you have zones that, that create land uses. You don't put a junkyard next to a daycare center, you know, and you don't put a honky-tonk next to a church, and so, that's why we have zones. But I, I'm cognizant that we need to follow the letter of the law and we don't need to be just absolutely redneck, closed-minded about things, but we have to provide for the highest and best use of a piece of property and we have to also provide for protection of the existing property and its development. So... I'd like to see some, some language. I mean, we may not be able to adopt it, it may not be something that our attorney says is a good idea. It may not be legal. We may be... I mean, what you've got written here is very good, and I like this. But I, I'm asking if we could step a step further.
We have a, um, we have a, this will be a term you're going to use on this. And we have worked with him on this, but not this particular question, so...
Yeah, well...
We will type it back.
I'm retired, got nothing but time. I'd be glad to talk to him if he'd set me up in a forum.
All right, I will look at that.
Okay. And I can express my concerns and we can talk about, well, the concerns of the Board. I'm, I don't mean to be a, take charge, but, uh, well, I'm, I'm drawing a presumption here now. I'm guessing that I'm speaking for all of y'all, and I may not be, is that correct?
You are.
Okay.
That's why you're named chairperson.
Well, now I got chairperson because I got elected. Nobody else want to do it. And, and every time I'm chair, why do things have to be difficult?
He won't rage.
Okay, I'll work on that.
Okay. I, I, but other than that, everything that you've written down here, I agree with. I don't, I don't know if it's, if there's a consensus and agreement on that, if it all looks pretty good to everybody. We just, if we could hash out that one other point, and maybe, uh, we'd have an ordinance that, that really would work for everybody.
Okay.
You know? And if you had something that you could tell these applicants when they do come, these are our requirements, and if you can meet these requirements, well, great. I mean, the thing, on, the gentleman that had the property, uh, tonight said that he had, and I noticed in the documents that he had bought that property before, he already owned it. He was going to do a duplex apartment kind of thing with it. So he can still do that, it's not that he bought the property and now he's stuck with it. He, he still has an out. But he changed his mind and wanted to do this other thing, which is admirable.
Just the location.
But not at that location. So if we could have, uh, upfront instructed him or had some, here's a document, says, if you can move it or buy a piece of property here, instead of here, you're good, so... It's worth a try, I'd like to try. I'm not trying to put... Well, I don't, I'm, I don't want to put extra work on you, you got plenty to do already. I'll be glad to help. But, uh, find out what we could do with that. And if you want me to talk to him, I'll be glad to visit. Yes, sir? Please, take more than that.
Gary.